Good evening, welcome to Lebanon City Council, May 27, 2025. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Here.
Mr. Sellers? Mrs. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Lammerow?
Here.
Mrs. Eggers?
Here.
And Mr. Coop?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Sellers. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Please turn this for the invocation and the pledge.
Fatherhead? Thank you, Heavenly Father, for today, and for those that are with us, Lord, and those that are in the audience, Lord, that you just continue to look over our community and our town, and us as individuals. We also just want to thank you for the meaningful day of yesterday, Lord, and those, the men and women that fought for this great kind of, we have so grateful for them, and just the time that we had that we could not celebrate death, but just, just look back and reflect and be appreciative of that, of all that have gone forward before us. We thank you so much, Jesus, in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above.
Moving on, consideration of council work session minutes, April 1st. They are sitting at your desk. I should have emailed you also. Are you the motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Consideration of council meeting minutes, April 22nd, 2025. Do I have a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Moving on to previous business under regular items. Ordinance number 2025-057.
Ordinance number 2025-057, approving of the Lebanon zoning code to bring non-conforming lots into compliance to targeted changes to the city's small lot infill development regulations.
This ordinance approves updates the Lebanon zoning code to bring non-conforming lots into compliance by promoting small lot infill development and building renovations within specific areas.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Second. Any comments here? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Will stand.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-059.
Ordinance number 2025-059, authorizing the sale of approximately 0.008 acres of city-owned property located off South Cherry Street, adjacent to the new parking lot in Vicentennial Park, to the adjacent property owner for $20,000 and declaring emergency.
This ordinance authorizes the sale of .008 acres of property adjacent to the new parking lot in Vicentennial Park, to the adjacent property owners located at 130 East Main Street for their purposes of making the lot, current lot, more symmetrical.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
In our new business, we have ordinance number 2025-063, and a slide presentation about the capital improvement plan.
Good, so, City Council has seen this presentation, but want to share it with the, with the public as well. So the five-year capital improvement plan...
Scott, before you get going, do I have a motion for the first train?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The five-year CIP really provides a foundation for the city's focus over the next five years in terms of our infrastructure projects. So, that's both roadway utility projects, really is all encompassing. It's a key component of the city's strategic planning process. This plan is updated by City Council on an annual basis. So want to start with just talking about some of the key roadway projects that are in the five-year plan. Next year, you can see, we'll be reconstructing Cedar and Crescent Court, Suncrest and Meadow Lane reconstruction. We are going to be doing some safety improvements and a little bit of realignment along Mason Moro Mill Grove Road. We are pursuing some federal grant funding to do some significant improvements along the bypass 48 Columbus Avenue corridor. These improvements were recommended by the recently completed Safe Streets For All study. And then we'll be doing our annual paving program. And then, we do have scheduled for replacement railroad bridge 2.10, which was recommended to be, to be replaced as well. Looking forward into 2027, we'll be moving into construction on the widening of State Route 63, portion of it, kind of from Neo-Larson Way out to the parkside development. It'll be widened to three lanes along that section. And then we also have a couple reconstruction projects. We are looking at pursuing some ODOT bridge funding to replace the Water Street Bridge that year as well. 2028 will focus on Pleasant Street reconstruction, Jamison Lane Bridge, again, will be kind of ODOT dependent in terms of their funding. And then we are, one of the legislative items tonight is authorizing the city to pursue OPI grants for traffic signal upgrades. If we're successfully awarded those grants, that would be moving into construction in 2028. And then 2029, our major focus is improvements to the bypass 48, State Route 123 interchange and kind of that corridor. So we will also be pursuing some grant funding to help support that project. And then 2030, probably the largest project ever, the reconstruction of a portion of Franklin Road. Everything that you see in red denotes a project that we either have or will be pursuing grant funding for.
Can I ask you that question?
Yeah.
Jamison Lane Bridge, I know that's out there a little bit, but will that be literally torn down and rebuilt so it's not a hairpin?
Yes, so obviously I think part of that would be some alignment improvements. I know buses have challenges getting back there, so that's been part of the discussion we've had with the firm, is kind of helping us go through the grant application.
And then anything on the road leading up to from Main Street to that?
We haven't got that far in the planning, but I would, I would anticipate that road improvements would be included, obviously up to the bridge. There have been road improvements beyond the bridge, so I would anticipate that being part of that.
And about me, residents are very happy to get that.
Thank you.
Yep. This is just kind of a snapshot of, you know, the city's annual spending on road improvement projects, and a couple different chunks, kind of going back to pre-2018. You can kind of see we're a little over $3 million a year between the years of 2018 and this year. That bumped up to $7.4 million a year. Again, this plan represents the next five years. We're seeing that number push 12, again, that is grant dependent, so some of the projects may fall off or get pushed farther back if we don't get grant funding. But as the plan stands right now, that would be the level, level of effort of our roads for the next five years. Like to share this information. Last year, we hired a company to kind of go out and do an inventory and condition assessment on all of our roads, to kind of get an unbiased, kind of third-party assessment of how we're doing in terms of our road improvement investment. You can see it hadn't been done prior to last year until going all the way back to 2013. So the good news is, we've definitely seen, we're definitely seeing significant improvement in the overall condition of our roads. The number of roads that are categorized as being in good condition was up 20%, and the number of roads categorized as being in poor condition was down 25%. So, we are making progress. It's, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time, that's something that we just need to kind of work on every year with the investment that we're intending to make.
And the best way for residents, if they see a really bad pothole, is to, what is the best way for them to communicate with the city?
They can call or email the service department. They can email my office, the city engineer's office. We'll put in a work order to have it taken care of. Again, just kind of a snapshot on the total amount of roadway investment over the next five years. Based on this level of effort, you know, I think, I would, I would say the city is investing what we should be investing each year in our, in our roadway program. And historically, that's not been the case, but certainly over the last five years, and then the five years moving forward, we're there.
Scott, so after we go through and we do this resurfacing, approximately, how long is that supposed to last? I mean, obviously, we can't predict the three of them.
Yeah, we, we kind of use a number of about 15 years. It really kind of varies, anywhere from kind of 12 to 20 years. Some of, like countryside, we're resurfacing this year, and it's the first time we've been in there resurfacing that, you know, that subdivision. But I, I would suggest 15 years is a good, kind of average. One of the key items that we manage when putting together the, the capital improvement plan is making sure that we're maintaining adequate year-end cash balances. So, for us, that's, you know, about six months, or it's roughly, you know, around, around $2 million, kind of a revenue that's not affiliated with the grant, is what we try to make sure we're maintaining in cash reserves. You can see on the, on the graph, it kind of spikes all over the place. That's really a function of when we get grants, and then when the project's executed. But it kind of turns out to stay about in that, you know, $2 million cash reserves level. Geo-bond fund, so the good news is, over the years, as City Council has kind of paid off debt early and reduced our overall debt load, we've been able to manage the cash reserves within the geo-bond fund. This is the, the fund that supports any sort of debt, non-enterprise fund debt that the city issues. So you can see it's been very stable, really over the last 15 years. And that's with the city paying down debt, and then being able to take some of that revenue that had historically been applied towards debt service and investing it in actually roadway maintenance in our annual program. So we're in good, good position with regards to the geo-bond fund. The spike that you see in 2027 represents issuing debt for a new police facility. That's definitely within the plan, something that is needed. So that spike that you see represents issuing the debt, and then obviously encumbering the money through the construction of the police station. Just some other kind of key, more utility-related projects. Next year, we're going to be looking at repainting the Warrior Tower up off of Miller Road. We continue to work on our electric system interconnection and transmission system improvements. We will be completing the wastewater treatment plant aeration improvements. We've been kind of doing one of those tanks a year. Next year will be the last year. And then we also synchronize replacing old water mains with roadway resurfacing roadway improvement projects. So an example of that is North Broadway. What you see construction-wise on North Broadway today is replacing the water main in anticipation of that road getting paved later this fall. Park system projects, and these, again, are heavily grant-dependent, but we have applied for a state grant to construct a new multi-use path along Cincinnati Avenue. Cincinnati Avenue between Glosser and West Street, we're looking at partnering with the Miller Park Trust, potentially doing kind of a bouldering nature playscape area out there. 2027, again, looking at some additional trail connections along Monroe Road. We're in discussions right now, doing some planning around potential splash pad. We do continue to have a need to replace the concession and restroom building at Colonial Park East. 2028, so one of the resolutions that council will be voting on tonight would be authorizing the city to apply for an OPI grant for the extension of a multi-use path along Miller Road. This would ultimately provide the connection between the junior high and the high school, which I know is part of our plan for sure. So, just to kind of give you a snapshot of, of the trails, the city's Trail Master Plan, everything in yellow is constructed, everything in green is essentially under construction this year. So this is a big year in terms of trails with the North Broadway, separate path getting constructed, the Bowman Trail getting constructed, and then in conjunction with the Glosser Road Improvement Project, there'll be a trail down Glosser Road. That then kind of just leaves, the blue segments are really what we're pursuing funding for right now. So Cincinnati Avenue to connect kind of the west side of our community into downtown Lebanon, and then kind of that Miller Road corridor, to again, kind of start building and connecting the schools up there. So just kind of summarizing some key highlights. So the income tax credit reduction revenue has been fully programmed into our road program as approved by City Council back in 2018. We do assume about a 4% annual income tax revenue growth rate. Historically, we beat that, but so it tends to be a conservative estimate. Total road expenditures within the five-year plan is just over $48 million. The program does depend on $22 million in state federal grants, which we will, we will pursue. The only new debt that's included in the plan is the new police facility in 2027 that we discussed, and then the potential for some electric enterprise debt, just based on some interconnection and transmission system improvements that we're evaluating right now. So that's up there.
Very good, we have a motion and a second for first read, so we'll see this.
That's actually the voting.
Oh, where are we at?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct, no, that'd be a pervert.
Yeah, first reading. How are we going to do that? Ordinance number 2025-064.
Ordinance number 2025-064, approving the Wild Turkey Farm subdivision, creating a new law of record, is approved by planning commission and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves a replat to subdivide a property to create multiple build parcels for industrial development, which will support the JBM manufacturing expansion project.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-065.
Resolution number 2025-065, authorizing the city manager to apply for an OPI grant to support resurfacing of Deerfield Road.
This resolution authorizes the city to apply for grant funding through the OPI STBG/CMAC repaving pilot program to support the resurfacing of Deerfield Road from East Street to Wright Avenue.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-066.
Resolution number 2025-066, authorizing the city manager to apply for an OPI grant to support traffic signal improvements along major corridors throughout the city.
This resolution authorizes the city to apply for grant funding through the OPI STBG/CMAC program to support traffic signal improvements primarily located along Columbus Avenue, Main Street, and North Broadway. This project has been included in the CIP program for 2028.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-067.
Resolution number 2025-067, authorizing the city manager to apply for an OPI grant to support the construction of Miller Road multi-use trail. Before you get...
I, I don't mean to single you out, it's where I'm totally happy to have you here. The acoustics in this room are bizarre, so just be aware that, I mean, it sounds like you're talking like right here, so, okay? Appreciate it, no, I mean, I don't know. I, I have a hard enough time thinking and reading through this.
This resolution authorizes the city to apply for grant funding through the OPI Transportation Alternatives Program to support the construction of the Miller Road multi-use trail from Broadway Avenue Drake to Drake Road. This project is included in the capital improvement plan for 2028, and is identified in the Parks Master Plan as a high priority.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-068.
Ordinance number 2025-068, authorizing the city manager to enter into an annexation agreement with Turtle Creek Township for the Schwartz property, which establishes temporary revenue sharing obligations and declaring emergency.
This ordinance approves an annexation agreement with Turtle Creek Township for a type-one annexation of approximately 313 acres of property located off of Drake Road to support the future Ray Rock residential development. By pursuing a type-one annexation, this will allow the property to ultimately be removed from the township taxing jurisdiction.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Will stand.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Completes our scheduled items tonight. Is there anything for the city manager board?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the next meeting of council would be a work session scheduled for next Tuesday night. There's only, right now, there would only be one new legislative item. That would be an ordinance modifying the current contract with AMP with regards to the behind-the-meter generation, essentially due to some gas capacity issues up at the Warren Sub location. Instead of doing 10 megawatts of generators up there, and 10 megawatts of generation down at the Columbia Road Substation, we're going to have to move the generation from the Warren Sub, we're going to move five up to the Monroe Road Substation, and five to the Columbia Substation. So, the financials of the project don't change, but because the locations were modified, we do want to bring that back to City Council. So it'd be up to you if you want to have a work session next week, but that would be only...
No, we'll just put it to our next schedule meeting.
Okay.
So that'll be, so now it's three generators?
It's the same, it's three, it's three at Columbia, and then one kind of on set up at Monroe. So the 20 megawatts is the same, it's just distributed both differently.
So I thought it was a one, I thought it was two 10 megawatts, but it's not?
Yeah, no, I think it'll be broken down, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so we're going to put 10 megawatts in each location.
Yeah, two generators.
100%.
Yeah. So now it's a 10, a 5, and 5?
So then it's going to be a 5 and then a 15.
Oh, okay, okay.
Does the 5, the one we're going down to 5, is it putting out enough power to...
Yeah, I mean, they're, yeah, they're all...
Is it going to need supplemental assistance later on at Monroe, or?
No, because I, the, I mean, the substations are essentially interconnected, so the impact to the system is, you know, the equivalent, it's 20 megawatts now, the same as what was before. And I think we had, we had kind of always wanted to do Monroe at some point with the generation, but until Duke upgrades their, their gas service in the Warren Sub, which is that kind of that Turtle Creek and Monroe area, we're, you know, it's going to be limited to that location.
Yeah, all this is connected to the same loop.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay, so as of now, then, we're planning on not having a work session next week. The other question, I think, you know, Dan had sent an email, Councilman Phil had asked about it, that first work session in August, that Tuesday, is the Police Department's national night out. So historically, council has changed that meeting date, so if you guys want to...
Till Wednesday, right? Does that work for everybody?
The 6th.
The 6th, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, just want to remind folks, kind of the festival event season is going to kick off here, not this weekend, but next weekend. The city's Healthy Living Market will be June 7th, along Mulberry Street from 10:00 to 2:00. We've got over 40 vendors signed up, so it should be gloss to see, learn, do. There's a kind of a pub strut walk that's going to be part of that. And then that same day, on Broadway, in front of Harmon Museum, is the Lebanon Festival of the Arts from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're going to have musical performances, and there's activities for the kids to do. And they have about 50 local work vendors.
Nice.
So, but as they've got a very turnout for that, so should be a good day in downtown Lebanon. I encourage folks to come out and support both events. That's all I have, Mayor.
There you go. Got anything for us, Mr. Lammerow?
I say a quick question. We were talking about the, the streetlights and that sort of thing. As I look at the different gateways that we have to town, how do we, what's, what's the procedure if, 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 if one of those entries becomes like a bottleneck? Do we reach out to ODOT on that? Do we reach out to the county on that? Or are they just supposed to, in their infinite wisdom, know that we need help there? Or is, how does that look? Does that look like?
Typically, we would take the lead. So, within the city, within the city limits, we, to sort of agree, have kind of management control over the state routes.
Okay.
So, if there are traffic signal timing concerns or questions, they would want to reach out to the city. An example would be, I got an email last week about, from a resident concerned about the timing of the traffic signal there cooking bypass 48. So we had our traffic engineer go out and look at it, he's like, yeah, the timing's off a bit, made some adjustments. So we are responsible for maintaining the traffic signals within the city, even if they're on state routes. If the bottleneck is more of just kind of a roadway lane or a capacity issue, and involves a state route, those are more long-term. So that, those typically involve, you know, approval, funding through ODOT or OPI.
Is that something we reach out to ODOT and say, hey, out next to Walmart, or on the north side of town, or, you know, east, west, whatever?
Yeah.
We need a third lane or a turn lane.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be something that we would, it would, most of those grant programs are through OPI, so most of those, we'll kind of go through that process, like the Columbus Avenue bypass 48 project that we're, we're going to be pursuing funding for.
Awesome. So, Mayor. There you go. Mr. Norris?
I just want to say that yesterday was really nice, thanking the city and those that participated in our, in our parade. And that, it was just such a gorgeous day, and it was just a great day in America and Lebanon, Ohio. When those planes go over, I always get chills, I love that. So, I think, moving forward from the next many years, I think traffic is, traffic and movement in Lebanon is going to be on, I think that's probably what I get talked to about now more than anything, is, is various areas of Lebanon that are crowded, or you said bottlenecked, or, you know, stop sign placement, light placement. So, I'm glad we have, I'm glad we're putting energy and effort into it, seeking grants now, seeking money now. I know we've done a lot, I know there's more to do. I just ask people to be patient and, and call and ask us for questions. I've gotten several people have contacted me about, just questioning, especially with our Safe, Safe Streets For All program that we just did, and how that'll be, how they can access that, and what's going to come out of that. I just tell people that everything will be on our websites, we'll talk about it here. But that seems to be the hot button right now, is, is traffic, and then the concern as we grow with three large, one potential, and two starting developments that are going on right now, is those people, we want people to come to Lebanon, you know, to shop here So there's people, we want people to come to Lebanon, you know, to shop here and stay here, but we also want to be able to get them in and out safely and not avoid Lebanon because of the constant traffic. Some stuff we can do, something about, trucks on Main Street, can't do anything about right now, but, you know, maybe through traffic movement, light studies, whatever, we can make it better. And that's what, that's what we're here to try to do. So just ask for people's patience. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Coe?
Yesterday was, the ceremonies were great, and as we take time to honor those who gave all, and so they were well done, moving ceremonies, for those that want to take that time to reflect, they really hit the mark. And I know, I know, there was one question about some help with the flag raising, I need to call that up with the city manager. But yeah, just a great day, and that's all I got.
Thursday is the last day of school, so to celebrate another great year, Miller Park, six to eight, ice cream, churis, fun for all. Everybody can come, what's that?
No drama this year?
No drama.
Perfect.
No drama, just ice cream. Yeah, so everybody can come out and enjoy that. That's it.
Very good.
I just have a quick question about the capital improvement plan. So we're waiting on that study by Burgess and Nyphle on the Santeri Sewer. If that comes up with a big number, will we revise the plan, or will we wait till a year from now to revise it?
Yeah, I mean, typically, that would be, depending on the recommendations, you know, I would expect that plan, that plan's not going to be complete until early next year, because part of what they have to capture is wet weather flow conditions within our Santeri Sewer system, which is likely going to be in the fall at this point. So I would expect to start getting some of those results back next year in time to then update the following capital improvement plan. Yeah. We are, one of the things that we do know we need to do on our sewer system is a twenty inch force main that runs between Glosser Road down to the wastewater plant. That's aging, and we know we're going to have to replace that at some point. So for the last several years, we've been setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a reserve replacement fund just to start building a savings account for that project. So although it doesn't show up in your plan, there's money being set aside for, for that.
Awesome, thank you.
Just a couple housekeeping things in regards to the smart meter switches.
Yeah.
Are, where are we at with that, number one?
At least, yeah. I'd say at least halfway.
And this might be in the lead, so I'd like you to follow up with it. What is the, what is the standard process that you go through to notify residents and then switching it? How, how does that work? And are most of the meters at the road, or are they in people's houses?
For the water, for the water meters, it varies. So some of those, yeah, some of the water meters are in the house, some in pits in the yard.
Got it. So he knocked on my door.
Yeah. So they, you know, you know, what their task to do is, you know, provide kind of written notice with a door hanger, with contact information, and, you know, kind of a schedule of when it's going to be done, and then obviously make contact with the property owner. But either way, even if the pit's outside and they don't have to go into the house, they should be notifying the resident of when that switchover's going to take place. They've got a series of kind of written communications that they send out, delivered to the property owners. But the contractor, our contractor's responsible for that, so that's coming from the contractor too.
And so the city wouldn't be involved in like shutting people's water off?
The only time it gets to that point is if there's been multiple attempts to gain access to a meter inside the house, and we don't get any sort of response, at some point there is a notice that's sent out that essentially you either have to get in there and change out the meter, or you have to shut your water off. So that would be the only, and I don't think, I don't think we've had to get to that point yet, we've had to send those notices out a few times. Once folks get that notice, they tend to get with us and schedule a time that's mutually agreeable.
All right, I'll follow, just continue that, I'll follow offline with just a concern there. And then as far as the flag for Memorial Day at the cemetery, I was talking to the commander, he was talking about how at dawn, or yeah, sunrise, it's lowered half staff, and then at noon, it's raised back up. So I didn't know if we could just schedule that for next year.
Yep.
Awesome. Besides that, it was, it was a great weekend in Lebanon. We're, we live in a blessed city, and it was great to be with everybody as we honored those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. On a personal note, it's my eighteenth anniversary with my wife, and I just want to say happy anniversary to her and for putting up with, with me, and there's only one person that could have possibly done that, and that's her. So with that, we will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
No move. Second. Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, and we will see you in two weeks.